The donations are on the?
Uh, yes.
The donations on the consent agenda? Just as always, uh, so lucky are we to have people donating, um, their, what they can to our district. There are some beautiful donations that I just want to say thank you for, as always, to the members of the community.
Nope, I got nothing.
It's dropping my internet connection.
I had to refresh my board docs, it wouldn't let me back in.
I've rebooted twice now.
So, Mr. Heinz, I agree with you. It's wonderful that we get such kind donations and I'm always amazed that every time we have one of these meetings, the donations that we get.
Thank you, bro.
You know, there's, there's- Paper works every time.
Thank you.
Such a, there's just a great variety. Um, the, there was one that caught my eye. Lowe's donated $5,000.
Yes.
Um, you know, holy cow. And, um, box tops for education, which is still a thing. And the great thing about box tops for education, by the way, for people who don't know, is that that comes in real old fashioned money.
Yeah, it's a check.
It's a check. And so it goes into the receiving schools, um, you know, very often the most needed format, which just allows the administrative team and the teachers to really decide where that, that money can be used to the greatest advantage. So, um, love, love box tops.
And the other thing people might not know is a box top is 10 cents. So every time you throw one of those away, it's a dime. So I always used that when I was trying to get people to give to, to, uh, box tops. And the resignation stays on the, I just want to make a comment on that. For anyone who doesn't know, the resignation is Ms. Wester, and she is a teacher at Garrity, and she is one of our former Ohio Teacher of the Year winners. So, fabulous teacher, we wish her the best in retirement. Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
No.
If not, then Mr. Danner, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Sereni?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
So, the consent agenda covered our items of meeting minutes, personnel, education services, business services, and finance. So the next is the work session, correct?
Yes.
And that topic up would be the middle school renovations. So George and Mr. Myers.
Thank you. We weren't, we didn't meet last month, so this month we'd like to give you an update. Couple things that we wanted to go over. We wanted to give another program update. These numbers haven't changed, we've seen them over the course, but just big picture of how we're tracking for the total program. I'll get into the details of both of the middle school budgets. We have the details as the background, but I wanted to talk a little bit about, since the last time we met, we have had a couple minor changes that were approved with the director's sign off, so we wanted to update you on all that. Also go over how we're tracking for the other allowances of the project and upcoming items. We have Jack Hellog here that can give a little bit of an up, a construction update as to where we are in the schedule. And then we've attached some photographs just so you can have a feel for, for the progress we have for the project. So, big picture, the project funding, again, this hasn't changed, we have $159 million. Tracking between the high school, the middle schools, and the enabling project, we're still tracking towards the 158, so that means we have a delta to the good of $761,000. And, and as we've looked into this, any, any funding that we have left over at the end of the middle school work, the district will be able to use for other capital improvement projects. So as we're working with the middle schools and we're, we're tackling items as they come up, but that, that's one of the things that's good to know as we manage the project. Some of the items that have happened since the last time we met, we've had additional deduct change orders for E rates. With some of the state requirements, we needed to remove the 15%, and then the district is actually paying that 15%. So it's, it's kind of a wash for the district, but they were change orders to Turner. We had a change order to paint the Monticello Center Gym. As you remember, we had to tear that down for the structure and everything else. So now the scaffolding's all down, ceiling's all painted and everything else. And then we also had some minor authority having jurisdiction. They had some requests for some additional fire alarm devices. So we've, we've made those changes and we're going to have some more of those changes coming up. But those are the changes that we have with the project. We've also made some strides with the furniture, yes?
I'm sorry, can you explain the term authority having jurisdiction for those of us who are not in the industry?
Sure, sure. Yeah, the, the fire department in the city, as, as we get permits for the project, they review the drawings and the scope that's going to be done, and sometimes they have special requests. So in this case, it was the fire department.
That was a request that really was, request is a kind term. They told us that we have to have-
It wouldn't benefit us for pushing back.
Correct, right.
It's, we argued a little bit and then we seen the light and we approved it.
Very good.
Um, we've, we've made some strides with the furniture selection, so we're hoping to be able to make those orders. I've added those to the budget sheet, so they fall within the, the project budget as we're managing it. And we've also, we're looking at bringing on a consultant to help us with managing all of the moves as far as identifying all the items. We had Moody Nolan have created kind of a broad brush bulletin that will eventually go to Turner, but now we need to start working on all those details. Those costs are also in the soft costs, okay? I won't get into the, all the details of this, I have another summary sheet, but again, as, as we update these every time we see you, where are we tracking for the money that we have in the project compared to the schedule? What are the big issues that we're managing? And we're right in line with what we have with the schedule and the funds that we have left in the project. This one, I actually added the allowance, you know, as we have, that's already in the contract, so there's some benefits to using allowances as we have issues that come up. So I wanted to add those.
The allowances were things like random number thrown at plaster work or things like that?
Exactly, exactly. Items that we knew, we knew were going to be in the project that we couldn't define, and then also items, structural items and items such as that. So this is a, this is a big quick picture as to if we stopped today. So as we manage the project and we see that there's an issue and Turner brings it up and says, "We're going to have to address this," we try to identify some kind of costs so that we can manage for that. If we finish the project today, between the delta that we have, between the program and how we're managing the middle schools, and then the funds that we have in the middle school, we have roughly $2.6 million. Now, that's not to say we're not going to spend it, we know we're going to come up with other items next week that we don't see today, but I thought as a milestone discussion that it would be good for everybody to understand that.
Could you possibly clarify the soft costs and the hard costs?
Absolutely. So the hard costs are really kind of the bricks and the sticks. So Turner is our construction manager, all of their trades that they have on that are performing work are hard costs. And the soft costs are the professionals. So as we've hired Moody Nolan, as we have our relocation specialists, those are soft costs. So earlier on, we kind of, we, we took a chunk of the budget and we said, "Okay, we're going to have a, you know, 100, or 1.2 million or 1.100," well, I can't see what the exact amount was. It was like, uh, we, we identified an amount that we were going to manage towards, and we've tracked, and just until this month when we brought on the move consultant, we've actually exceeded that. So, but, but the big picture in the project, we have it. I can show that in a little more detail here. It's actually in your backup, in the backup that you see.
Hard costs. No, soft costs are $120,000 per building.
$120,000.
That was the contingency. As opposed to the known things like the architect's fees.
So we exceeded that. Like Doug said, we exceeded it, but we're, we're just going to pull money from the other contingency that we have.
Thank you. So then the rest of the slides that we have here are, are some of the details. As I mentioned, the, the green items are items that have been executed since the last time we met, some deduct change orders and some add change orders. And then the total, that's for Monticello. And then Roxborough, we have, we have the same, this, the same kind of information we show you all the time. This is, this is the detail of, of the big picture that we had talked about. And then this is the soft cost. So there's the total we had, $240,000. And then as we have had changes, just now we've, we've exceeded that. But as George mentioned, we can transfer some funds.
A lot of that, again, was increased, I don't want it to sound like we were just spending money we knew we didn't have, but anytime we added something to the project, that was not in the architect's scope of work, so we had to pay for that.
Can, can you guys talk a little bit about the, the move in process? I mean, not in a lot of detail, but are you using the same contractor you used for the high school?
No, this, this is, we recognize this is going to be a juggling act, that instead of just moving from Wiley to the high school, now we're moving to two separate buildings. And yet we're also pulling stuff from a, a third space, which is-
Warehouse.
The warehouse. And we have to manage utilizing everything we possibly can out of Wiley and separating it appropriately, moving copiers, and we're working on that. Right now, the consultant that we're hiring is going to pull all that information together. They're going classroom by classroom, doing an assessment of what we have and where it has to go. And we're, again, our goal is to use everything we possibly can out of Wiley, because if, the way we look at it, if it's being used now, it has to be in somewhat decent shape. And then whatever we have to pull from, we already took the architect and the consultant to the warehouse. We looked at everything that's in there. There are pieces that have to come out of there and go into the school. And then, again, they're getting a big picture of how many student desks we may need and so on.
So, the amount of furniture that I look at here doesn't seem to be a lot?
Or the furniture, the price that's on there?
Right.
That, that's small. So what, we are replacing the teachers' desks. So all the teachers will have new desks. We are replacing the library shelving in-
At Roxborough.
Roxborough, because as we took that apart to, to try to save it, was falling apart. And we're going to reuse Wiley's, uh, the bookcases and so on to go into Monticello.
The firm that you hired, is it the same firm that you used to move into? Is it entirely?
Entirely different.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a different approach. So this, this firm actually helps colleges and high schools to relocate. And it's a professional service where they actually have staff that will help us. We've had Moody Nolan start to prepare a bulletin so they can identify all the classroom desks and the rooms, so that a room in Wiley is going to go to this room in, in Monticello or Roxborough. But now we're getting to the detail. So then they'll develop matrix, and we'll actually have stickers that they'll put on the different items. And when it comes time, so once we have this bulletin, we'll give it to Turner, they can price it out with several different movers. And then when those movers actually start to relocate everything, then we'll have someone from this company, there'll be a person in each of the schools, so that they can, they can be a traffic cop and they can answer questions on the fly. So a lot of the things that we learned with the high school, we're hoping to avoid now.
Is anything coming out of Milliken or is it just coming out of the warehouse?
We do have, uh, what I, what I put in Milliken was more of the equipment. So we, we separated that into a couple different rooms. So Roxborough, Monticello's operational type equipment, from the scrubbers to that type of stuff, we, we separated it out. So that'll go back in. That may be our staff. I'm trying to limit our employees from having to do, uh, do any type of involvement with the move. Right now, we're looking at putting back together the principals' offices because we took them apart, and it's very difficult for somebody to look at a pile of stuff that's, that's modular type of equipment. So our staff will probably do that, if they're, I'm trying to keep them out of it.
We still have to retain the lease for the warehouse?
Till the end of the year. So when we're, when we're done, I'll have so many months to auction it off, sell it, however we need to dispose it.
You'll be doing your website stuff again, won't you?
So, George-
And thank you for that.
As you know, um, you know, there are equity concerns between Rox and Monti. And, and so I just kind of want to, and I know that this is already top of mind for you, but I think that we all feel it's important, especially when we're outfitting classrooms, that we keep that equity in mind in terms of we are getting, you know, this, when, when we're outfitting a classroom with brand new, top to bottom, that those classrooms go in equally, building to building, so that when we reopen, everybody just feels great about the fact that they're being equipped with similar generations of stuff.
And we, we have recognized that, and right now, the only, the only difference, so classrooms are going to be, you know, all the teachers are going to have brand new desks, we're going to reutilize the existing student desks, or the, from Wiley are going to go into the schools. Right now, the only thing that is different will be the library shelving at Monticello. But we are supplementing both libraries with new soft seating and so on to sort of, so Monticello is going to get some new items, but it's just the shelving itself is the wooden bookcases that are currently at Wiley.
And Monti is still getting a much bigger cafeteria update.
They're getting a whole new cafeteria.
Yeah, it's going to be the Rolls Royce of cafeterias. Which you don't hear Rolls Royce in school cafeteria said in the sense very often.
The students actually walk through maybe 50 yards of the kitchen, so that what the students actually get to use, uh, is not that much of that, that kitchen, but yes, they do get a newer kitchen.
And when is the move anticipated or when would the move start?
Soon as, uh, Jack lets us in there. I mean, the nice thing about the way we're approaching it now, I don't mean it, but it's going to be Jack's headache. It'll be all our headaches, but Jack gets to manage it. So as soon as he has spaces available, it'll be up to him if he wants to let people move equipment in or not.
Help us with all the coordination, so we have a lot of finger pointing and, and just, you know, as we can get some items in earlier.
We learned that from the high school move, that we, it's, it's difficult to manage from the builder to us and to a third party trying to manage all of it.
One chief.
And I have to ask this question because no discussion about this project is complete unless we ask about the, the cupolas or whatever they're called, the cupolas. Those are both being redone, right?
Those are approved, yes.
Great. Because I get asked that quite frequently by people in the community.
Everyone's prime concern.
Yes.
Like, do we have books in a library? No, we want to make sure it's pretty on the outside.
Well, but you know, Hightide set the standard.
Well, now everybody needs to look as good, right?
And that's what you see when you drive past.
Who doesn't love passing heights in the evening? It's gorgeous. Doesn't always work.
This is off topic, but not tonight, but can you share with us the plan and how Wiley then is going to be, the, the modules are going to be stripped away and what's going to be left? I mean, can you just make sure we get any information?
A lot of that's going to depend upon what the board decides to do with the property. I mean, we're, the, I'm actually getting pricing to keep modular F if that's something we decide to do, just be, and I could explain that in a future meeting if you might.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, maybe not all of us are up to speed on this. I'm certainly not, so whatever you can do to, share with us that.
I'm good without your question.
Thanks.
Okay.
Couple of construction photos that we have for updates. These are some classrooms in Monticello, and you can see on the left, we have the previous condition. We actually had some radiators in the room that we removed. The wall through unit, those remained. Those have been painted, and as you can see in the photographs in the right, we're starting to get some of the ceilings in, the duct work in, and some of the finishes in. And then again, these are just some, where we are in the construction right now. No specific issues or discussion about it, but I thought it'd be good to just kind of show you that, you know, we're getting some drywall taped and work's going on through all of, all of the different areas in the buildings. We actually started to finish the locker rooms, some of the painting. And then with Roxborough, some similar photographs.
Bottom right hand side, is that where the walls have been extended up to make sure that we have proper fire rating?
That looks to be like an original wall.
Oh, that's, okay. Yeah, yeah. I can get you some of those photos.
I'm sure you have lots of them. The authority having jurisdiction has a special interest in those walls, right?
Exactly. A lot of that work's done now.
Good.
And then if Jack can give a little bit of an update on the construction status?
Sure. So I'll start with Monticello. So at Monticello, those were the first photos you saw. You could see that we've started the wall painting, we've done the accent painting in the rooms, we've started locker painting, we did a mockup with the architect to make sure that everybody was satisfied with the condition of the locker painting. We've done flooring prep. You saw the photos of the ceramic tile repairs that are going on in the bathrooms. We started the elevator work at Monticello. And we're going to resume the ceiling work next week, which would be the ceiling grid. We've got some of it in, but we put them on pause. But we're going to be restarting the ceiling work next week. And then the underground utilities in the kitchen, those were installed and the floor has been re-poured. So that was a big milestone in Monticello.
That's the, okay, the, the new kitchen.
Right, the, the new underground for the new kitchen equipment. And then at Roxborough, the tunnel lid has been replaced, so we removed the old one and this new structural lid is installed. And then as far as finishes at Roxborough, we are doing flooring prep. Painting will start next week, and then ceiling will be one week after that. And at Roxborough, we did a mockup of the interactive monitor and the sound cabinets, so we actually put a sound cabinet on the wall and put the, the, the monitor bracket on the wall. And we made sure everybody was comfortable with the routing and the way the cabinet worked and as far as where the equipment goes. And then there were some questions on, specific questions on the interactive monitors, we actually hung one the other day just to make sure that the power cord and everything works, so.
And those will be used primarily by teachers. Have you had any teachers in to look at that, or is that?
Rachel Coleman was there. Actually, Rachel Coleman's walked through.
Good.
And then Thursday, we're going to walk the principals through.
Just in terms of what it is they're going to do every day with these things once they're installed.
Like Rachel, because then Rachel could pull in whoever she feels needs to come in and take a look.
Thank you.
And there's smaller versions of this display, is that?
Not much smaller, but there's, 70, is it 70 inches, I think?
Yeah, 70 inches.
It's really close to that. They're big.
Um, the locker painting, that's exterior only? Am I correct?
We're painting the, um, the corner side, and then we're painting the returns on the doors. So when you open the door, the edge you see will be painted.
Got it, okay.
So that's like an inch and a half, two inches of steel on the return?
Very good.
That's pretty much the update that we have here this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing the pictures, it's always helpful for us. You know, early on, there was a lot of belief in the community that was just going to be paint and carpeting, and when you see these pictures, you know it is a lot more than that. So, thank you very much for bringing those.
And we are still on time, on budget?
On budget. Keep saying that over and over again.
We keep, keep seeing Jack saying that.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation tonight. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to acknowledge two people who are in the audience. Dr. Brian Williams, who is going to be our interim superintendent, so thank you for being here. And I also, we appreciate you coming tonight. And I also want to introduce Mr. Christopher Cook, who is going to be the interim, and I'm sure I'm going to mess up this title, but he is being the interim of coordinator of alternative education at the Delisle Center. He, so he will be the interim for Brian while Brian is being the interim superintendent. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you both.
So next on the agenda is the community and school partnerships. So, Ms. Pepler, I will let you introduce your guest as well.
Okay. So, I have joining me Nadia Davaye, and she is the National Program Director for the Weiss Institute. And how we plan to do this this evening is I'm going to take you through a very brief update on my work.
Yeah.
Thank you. My work to date that will lead right into the work that we plan to do with the Weiss Institute. So, first, not that I need to remind all of you, but the, the reason that I'm here, and I think the reason that Nadia is here with us, has a lot to do with the five-year strategic plan that this district is nearing the end of that five years on. But so much work has been done, and I don't need to remind you of the five overall goals. But I do want to, basically for the audience, let people know that my work is very strongly driven by Goal Three, Strategic Plan Goal Three. And Goal Three also includes, in addition to what my position, the, the supervisor of community and school partnerships, and the wraparound or community schools work that I will be doing, it also includes fostering staff-parent relationships and improving communication with and among parents, school leaders, and teachers, and community partners. And just on a side note, I want you to know that Lisa Hunt, who's the coordinator of family engagement, and then Juliana Johnston Centuria from the Hight schools foundation, and I have formed a little, at least, communication and sharing of information team because our, our goals are very, there's, there's some real overlap. As you all also know, the, the, the Community and Schools Task Force was formed back in early last, or 2017, actually. And the superintendent convened this work to make recommendations related to creating a wraparound model of support services. And so a lot of people have heard that term wraparound. Going to get a tiny bit more into that later, but the task force included community members, teachers, administrators, and staff, and Beverly Wright was the member of the board that was on that task force. And that work was facilitated by United Way of Greater Cleveland. And they did a lot of work studying a lot of models, visiting districts that, that were already implementing wraparound services, and completed surveys and focus groups and gathered input from thousands of people through the surveys and the focus groups. And following that work, the recommendation was made to the superintendent and, and to the board to make, to hire somebody to lead this work within the district. And so I was hired and started my work at the end of September, so I'm nearing five months on the job. And so, yeah, it's been fun, right?
Yes.
Five months. So, I, I'm not going to read this to you, but I'm going to tell you that a, a lot of my initial work has been researching different models for the wraparound or community schools, meeting with a lot of district leadership and with teams of leaders in the district, meeting with community partners. You can see some of the people and groups that are mentioned here. But I, I want to take just a minute to talk to you about what I mean by models. And hopefully sometime in the future, when I do make a final recommendation to the administration about which model we will be using, we can take a little bit more time on this. But there are some terms that are used interchangeably by people, but there are some, some minor differences. And so, community schools, actually, let me start with wraparound. Wraparound, and this is Nancy Pepler's kind of description for the layperson, I think has, uh, uh, sometimes has a deficit focus to it. It's considered that wraparound helps communities meet the- It's considered that wraparound helps communities meet the deficits that they're experiencing in their community or that students have, and has a very mental health focus, which neither are bad things necessarily, but there is definitely a bias on the wraparound term. Communities and schools is another phrase that you'll see used a lot. And Communities and Schools is actually a national organization that works in districts around the country. And Community and Schools is focused heavily on dropout prevention, and that's their number one goal. It's dropout prevention, and they do great work. But Community Schools is, are public schools that partner with families and community organization to provide educational opportunities and all of the support services necessary to help kids succeed. And Community Schools, I believe, again, this is Nancy Pepler's editorial comment, have a more positive connotation. They mean, there's more partnering with community groups and educators. And there are lots of reasons why I'm leaning toward community schools as the model. And so I hope you'll do some of your own research. I can share lots more information with all of you. I've been having conversations with people from AFT, for example. It's the model that they, the American Federation of Teachers, that they support in schools. And so I think for a lot of reasons, it might be the right model for us. So, all of that to set, to lead us into the presentation from the Weiss Institute. And just a little bit of background for all of you. You know, because you read the papers and everybody's been talking about it, Cleveland was just named a Say Yes City. And Say Yes to Education, Nadia can give you some background, I'm sure, on this, but Say Yes to Education, through the process of choosing Cleveland, worked heavily with United Way of Greater Cleveland. And United Way has made a big investment in that work, just as they have with the work here in the district. And so Augie Napoli, who I think was trying to, oh, he's not here. He was, hopefully, he was going to join us. But he reached out to Dr. Dixon back in the fall to say, "I want you to think about how we might be able to work together with the Weiss Institute." Do you want to say anything about that?
No, I just think it's, remember, United Way was facilitated our focus groups. And Augie Napoli lives in Cleveland Heights and really supports our work. And he thought this would be a great opportunity to put frame, a framework around our next steps, because we knew, we knew that this was the best model for the organization, because we had been studying it since, actually, 2015, I think is when Josephine and Ari and I all went to our first meeting. And it was 2017 before we actually had our task force. So it's been a journey to get here, but I support, I mean, I'm thankful that United Way has been with us all along. And as you're here a little later, not only did they introduce us to Weiss Institute, they've actually put some funding toward our next steps. So it's wonderful. It's, I think, is a great next step for the work, to continue to work and to sustain the work. So I'll be looking forward to what you're going to hear about what they're going to do for our students and our families.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great partnership. I really appreciate that they introduced us.
Yes.
So the bullets that you see under Weiss Institute has proposed to work with the district to do these four things. There, again, they're Nancy Pepler's version of what Nadia is going to talk to you about. And I tried to put it into, into a little bit more layperson's terms. But analyze existing data to determine areas of support, identify community and district assets which can be harnessed to move all students along that pathway to success, help us develop individual growth plans for students, which was something else that was named in our strategic plan. And then provide a system for tracking, evaluating, and coordinating the tools to ensure that success. So as we've been, we met with United Way and Weiss Institute, and then we met again with the Weiss Institute. They came out, they presented to the district leadership. Nadia and several of her colleagues came out and presented to district leadership, including the cabinet, union leadership, and the district data team. There were then multiple internal discussions. I had meetings with the nurses team, with the social worker team. We've also had follow-up teleconferences with the data team, Allison Byrd and Betsy Gilmore, and then a data lead person from Syracuse Public Schools and the Weiss Institute works in Syracuse. And then a follow-up call with both Josephine Shelton-Towns and Allison Craig, two of the social workers, and a social worker from the Buffalo Public Schools and the Weiss Institute staff. So this is our, a lot of the pre-work and the diligence that we've done to look at this product as something that we do believe will, and I like the way that you've said that, Dr. Dixon, this is the framework. After we, after she and I met initially with the Weiss Institute team and they did their presentation, we both looked at each other and said, "This could really be the framework that could jumpstart my work."
Correct. And that's where Augie, which he was here, so you can hear all these accolades, that's where he even put some skin in the game, because we knew it was going to be a cost. And he agreed to put half of the cost of this partnership for us. So that's what really became, okay, this is it. They're agreeing to help us lift this by putting some money, upfront money, towards.
And so I think we're going to move into the presentation by Nadia. Do you want to do the clicker yourself? And feel free to interrupt, ask questions.
Great. Members of the board, thank you very much. And Dr. Dixon, thank you very much for having me here this evening to present to you all the partnership that we're looking to engage in with your school district here this evening. I'm very fortunate to have worked with the Say Yes to Education organization for the past seven years, implementing most of our five components of our theory of action in three of our communities, including serving as the lead individual, working with Cleveland Partners over the past two years to be able to get Cleveland over the hurdle to be named the next Say Yes City. So I've become very familiar with this area and spending most of my time here over the past two years. Working very closely with United Way as one of the key convening partners for the partnership with Say Yes to Education in Cleveland, it became very clear that the United Way was looking to invest in this community in a partnership where we can help with one of our five theory of action components, which is the need to be able to make decisions based on data. Not only financial allocations, but our resource allocations based on data. We've been fortunate enough to be over, over a ten-year period to be able to work with individuals from the American Institutes for Research and our key research partner at Johns Hopkins University, to be able to develop what we call the post-secondary planning system. The Weiss Institute, just very quickly, is a subdivision of Say Yes to Education. And essentially, what we're looking to do is to be able to broaden our network, our net reach within the country on being able to provide services to different communities without being named an actual Say Yes comprehensive community. Unfortunately, as a small foundation, we don't have the availability to be able to invest the resource that we do in a Say Yes City into smaller communities. But we do believe in the work enough to be able to figure out how we can partner with school districts to bring sort of components of our theory of action to be able to help where that particular district is focusing some of its efforts. So it was a pleasure to be able to meet with Nancy, once the decision was made with Dr. Dixon and Augie Napoli, to be able to bring the Weiss Institute and one of our aspects, this data component, to you all this evening. Post-secondary planning system, I too love the way Dr. Dixon stated it, is truly a framework. This isn't a cookie cutter data system that's going to come to you in a package of software that's ready to use and get licensed. This truly is a framework that's research-based, to be able to look at individual students along thirty different researched indicators for post-secondary completion success. So we're not looking to make sure that students are ready to attend post-secondary, two-year, four-year, or trade school. What we're looking to do is that we're tracking students from kindergarten through twelfth grade to ensure that as they're moving along that path, they truly are meeting those benchmarks that they need to be post-secondary completion-ready. Looking at each individual student in a school district through an individual growth plan allows us the opportunity to provide your team, social workers, and Nancy's team, with the data necessary to be able to provide one-on-one case management to individual students, without a lot of the research time that social workers usually have to take prior to them being able to work with individual students and provide resources. Also, the database will allow the school district to be able to look at that information on an aggregate level, as you're looking to inform your decisions on your resource allocations and where to focus your strategic plans. And then also to complete a community dashboard, of course, with your task force here, to be able to start to look at how the community can help better support the school district based on the data that we're able to provide you all. The database truly is a tool for the school district, and no way does the Weiss Institute and our partnership look to make any decisions, but truly just recommendations based on our research, based on our implementation, and based on the data that we're able to provide you. Some of the data that we look at, these are our thirteen steps to step number fourteen. We call it the pathway milestones. These are part of the data that we look to work with your local task force to make benchmarks for. So these thirteen steps have been researched, do have data behind them to be able to let us know that these are thirteen key indicators to post-secondary completion readiness for students. Now, these things mean different things in communities. So when you look at kindergarten readiness, in one community, kindergarten readiness could mean five different indicators. In another community, kindergarten readiness can mean thirty different indicators. When we talk about a framework of a database, that's exactly what we mean. We'll work with Nancy and her leadership team here to build a task force that will help us develop what does kindergarten readiness look like in this school district? What measurements do we need to have embedded into the system? And then we'll work with our research team at Johns Hopkins University to ensure that we have research base behind what that kindergarten readiness is going to look like for your community. So at each one of these steps, we're able to look at one individual student in this school district, as well as your district as a whole. And a little later, I'll be able to show you how we're able to look at each one of these thirteen steps in aggregate in different reporting methods. In addition to this post-secondary milestones, we have at-minimal thirty to forty indicators on student achievement that we measure in three domains: academic domain, in a health domain, and in a social-emotional domain. In your slide deck, you do have the slide that shows all of the domain sub-indicators. I'm not going to go through each one of them, and as you get updated, hopefully, on the partnership, you'll be able to see the advancements that we're making in some of these areas. But we did want to share them so that you have an idea that we're not just looking at academic success of students, but the well-being of students as a whole, so that academically they can thrive. In the social domain, social-emotional domain, these are the types of sub-indicators that we're looking at. And when we say we're looking at, we're looking to benchmark students through different inputs of data. One, through academic data that's provided directly from the district. Two, through some survey information that I'll talk about momentarily when I get more into the inputs. And then also by community partner and program provider inputs based on the task force recommendations. So a lot of this information is information that a social worker would normally get from students as they're starting to meet with them one-on-one. And what we're looking to do is to provide that data to the social workers on the onset of their meeting with students, to be able to move right into how they're able to provide some interventions for the students. How are we able to do that? Our post-secondary planning system is a proprietary database to Say Yes to Education that we've been building over the past ten years. It's web-based. It does meet all the security criteria that you're all going to ask me about. Allison is very, very much on point with making sure that she is ensuring that we meet all those security regulations. But truly, it's web-based, one, so that the parent and family engagement that we need, we can get because it can be accessed anywhere that there's web accessibility, and also for the ease of us being able to update this information as quickly as possible. We do like to say that the information that we get in this database is real-time. Real-time, to most of us, means if we get the data within a day, which is what this database does, we will communicate without any human interaction with infinite campus. So all of the data gets transferred each evening. If Johnny is suspended today, that social worker will know tomorrow. If Johnny today had his third absence and your community says absence number four means he's at risk, the social worker will have that on her screen immediately the next morning to show that he's one absence away from meeting that at-risk criteria for you all. So again, web-based, to be able to have that access in real-time, except for technology folks, real-time means it within a second. So how do we get this information? The top of this graph here shows you our inputs. So there are three surveys that are conducted either annually or biannually. There's one survey that is a student self-assessment survey. It usually takes eight to ten minutes and can be taken during the school day. Again, a decision made by your local task force that Nancy will convene. There's a parent and guardian survey, takes about fifteen minutes to complete. That parent and guardian survey is done electronically. It is also available in paper form if your community decides that that's a need, and all of our communities have decided that that is a need. And it's usually translated into the top three to five other languages other than English in your community, both in, on paper and electronically. The third survey that we collect is a teacher-staff survey. Originally, we had it be a teacher survey, and what we realized, working with communities, that sometimes there are other adults in the building that have stronger relationships and more knowledge of the interactions of students, not necessarily their teachers. So we've opened that up to be a staff and teacher survey. Understanding that not all staff members have access to all students' information, and not all screens are available to all individuals that have user access, but there is the availability for staff to take that during the day with a plan that we'll work out with Nancy on how to best implement that here during the school day. The second input is our data assessment. That assessment comes directly from the school district. That's information like day school attendance, test scores, state test scores, disciplinary action, things of that nature. All of that gets uploaded into the system and refreshed every evening. And then there's the opportunity for program providers or other community-based organizations who are partnering with the district to either enter data into the system that's required in order for us to gain access to the algorithms for the individual growth plans, or for some of your program providers who are working with key students to access potentially just a need that their specific program can have an intervention for. All of that is security-based, and all of that is decided on a program-by-provision, program-provision-by-provision basis, and based on your task force's local decisions as well.
Could I interrupt? So a program provider might be an organization doing tutoring or doing mental health services or something like that. And they will be, those that we work with will have access and will set the standards for how we want them to report on program participation, for example.
It could be as easy as an extended learning time after-school provider building an API so that the attendance for a student into that after-school program, if it was recommended for that student, when the Boys and Girls Club records that the student was there, it automatically uploads into the post-secondary planning system. So we can see that a student is taking advantage of what the intervention was. Mental health providers have pre- and post-assessments to be able to ensure that when they're closing out a student's case file, that the student has completed mental health counseling successfully, or that the recommendation is that they would continue on to another dosage of services. So things, those are the types of assessments that community partners would put in here.
And that would work with outside providers, not just in-house staff?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, there are very strict legal and security guidelines, and it is very focused just to the need of the program provider on what they see in the system.
So is it safe to say, because, okay, I assume because of the relationship that Say Yes has with Cleveland, they're using this system?
Yes.
So a lot of United Way service provider already have the APIs?
Already familiar, right.
This is already?
Yes, yes.
Pretty much set up? So it's not quite a slam dunk, but it really facilitates this interactivity?
Well, it's one of the, one of the first areas that we discussed in terms of the benefit that we will have as a district for being right here. Not only will United Way's information and from two-on-one, for example, automatically be uploaded, but the providers, if they are providers that a lot of people in the CMSD district use, they will already be trained and will be used to having to log things like attendance into the system for different programs.
The middle part of the graph here tells you some of the information that having that data entry gives us. that data entry gives us. One is the individual growth plan. That growth plan, I'll show you a screenshot of what it looks like momentarily, essentially allows a social worker or a user to be able to look at one specific student along all 14 of the pathway milestones, as well as the 30 to 40 local indicators, and where a student is either on track, meaning that they're doing very well, on track to thrive, there are absolutely no concerns for that student in that indicator area, or off-track, meaning that student could use some immediate intervention for that particular indicator. Also, the pathway analytics will be able to show where each student is on that pathway milestone chart, to the pathways that they should be, have been meeting by the grade level that they're at, at the time that you're looking at the system. The lower half here shows some reports that we can generate in the system for both teachers, principals, social workers, school districts, and your community dashboards. Those reports are just some of the reports that the post-secondary planning system is able to provide, and they are customizable. Screen here is a little bit hard to see. There's a lot of information on it, but we did want to sort of give an example of what, what does the system look like when you're actually sitting down looking at it. So this is what we call a program provider page. Let's say an organization called a company ABC is going to provide tutoring service and has gone through whatever your local vetting system is. Just because they're in the 211 system, it doesn't mean that Cleveland Heights is going to partner with them in post-secondary planning. Your task force will have a vetting process that each program provider needs to complete in order to be a partner into the system. So once those partners are selected, a social worker is able to see, one, where that program provider is, two, all of the locations that they're servicing students at, three, what the capacity is and what the current enrollment is to ensure that we're not enrolling students into programs that have waiting lists. Also, to be able to capture the gaps in service. So if we find that we're always trying to enroll Johnny in this company ABC tutoring, but we never have an opening because we've had 50 waitlist recommendations already, it's going to be able to show on your community dashboard the gap in service that's needed in that particular organization or that location. It'll also show your social workers or end-users all of the locations on a map, so as they're looking to provide services to those particular families, maybe the location next to the school isn't the closest to where Johnny needs to go after school because they're going to another guardian's house, or potentially have to be at another area closer to home. So being able to look at both programs on a list with all the criteria that's required for that particular program, and to be able to look at it on a map. Clicking on either will allow enrollment within three clicks. So when we're looking to enroll a student into a program, the system will allow you to do that, one, from the intervention, two, to the program provider, three, to enrollment in three clicks. It's also important to know that as we utilize that asset map and we attach those particular programs to an indicator, every program has an indicator. So when we're looking at where a student is off-track and we click on that enroll button, we're only going to see programs that meet that particular indicator's needs.
So we're not inadvertently sending a kid to something that's not appropriate?
Correct.
So who watches the dashboard? So I'm sure this boils up to a dashboard. When people see the indicators, someone's off, because maybe they don't have dental health. Who watches that and who intervenes?
So in some of our other communities, normally it's a member of the student support team, so your school counselors, your social workers, and sometimes other individuals in the building that are providing support. So in some schools, we have individuals called family support specialists, which sort of serve as a social worker without the general criteria of the educational background, looking at this kind of information. Speaking with Nancy, it would be Nancy's decision with her local leadership team here, who would be the best person to see the student-level data as they're looking to make those recommendations.
And so it would, however we set up the, the system, we, it would either be available to the social workers, or at some level to the social workers, some to the principals, some to the counselors. So that's what a lot of the work over the next six months will be with this task force, setting up how, who is the, who are the, I'm imagining it'll be a couple of main users at the building level, but who will be the main users? But then the other, the dashboard can be set up for that community-level data, for example, that says, "Help, community, we just don't have enough tutoring programs," or something. And that might be something that, that I look at on a regular basis, or that other district leadership looks at on a regular basis, or we have with the task force to develop new, new services and new partnerships.
Okay, so I get the fact that this is a work in progress right now.
Right.
You're figuring it out. Assume you're looking at best practices. I mean, this example's from Buffalo, so you're looking at, I'm sure, how they set it up. So would this just involve our high school kids? I mean, how is this, how do you see this rolling? I mean, how do you envision this?
No, it would be for all students in the district. And that's why it's the 14, 13 indicators that all track to that post-secondary success.
So I've got a couple of notes and, so there are components of this that have a very similar focus as the work that we do with Naviance.
I was going to ask about Naviance. He read my mind.
And so it's important, I think, to all of us that we really work that path, right? I mean, that's why we're here. It's also really important that we don't do, that we avoid redundancy.
Yep.
So this is one of the things that I'm, that keeps coming through my head as I'm hearing your, your presentation, and what I feel is promising, in particular, is that you mentioned that the district can decide which assessments to use for each of the different steps. So any more information you can give us on that? Because what we don't need is another test in kindergarten.
Yes.
And, or first, second, third, fourth, et cetera. So can you talk to me about what some of, some other districts are, are doing, how they're approaching that challenge? And also, what's your experience been with Naviance? Is this instead of? Is this in, you know, is this beside? How do you blend? And the, the right answer could be, it's instead of. So I turn it to you.
Sure. I can start with an example. In one of our communities, we anticipated PPS being an instead of the Naviance that was utilized for the past six years in that community. And in fact, what we realize is it worked better in tandem. So in our Buffalo community, these high schools are still using Naviance, and there is some bridges that are built in the differences of the work. But Naviance work did not go kindergarten to 12 and doesn't track the students or provide the intervention referrals all the way through completion of, not only the referral, but also the enrollment and participation into the different interventions that were being recommended. So the framework of the database is available to be customized as your community needs. So if you're looking to continue to use Naviance, which we would probably recommend that being the case if it's working for this community, your task force would look at what would be the ways that we would ensure that there's not a duplication of effort, that there's not dual entry of the same data, and that we're not overworking social workers to have to work in two separate systems. But that's not something that we would bring to your community as a cookie-cutter approach. We would allow your task force to let us know what's happening here currently, and our implementation and our IT team would be at each one of those meetings to ensure that we can meet what, what the local needs are going to be, so that as we're building, I call it the 20%, so 80% of the database is built, all of the framework is there, the algorithms are ready, the interventions, the indicators, the surveys, all that information is ready as a framework for you all to adapt locally.
Thank you. Then the, you mentioned three surveys. There's a survey that a student takes, a survey that parents take, and then a survey that teachers take about each one of their, their students. So if we're talking about a student in ninth grade, will, is, is that one teacher will fill out a survey for that student, or will all of that student's teachers fill out the survey? And can we have access? I'd like to see all three of those surveys.
So your local task force will decide for a student that is not with one teacher at least 80% of the time, who would be responsible for taking the survey for that student? We've had it work where we've had, in high school, all primary teachers have access to all students that they are teaching, so they could potentially have more than one survey on a high school student. Then we changed to where it was only a homeroom teacher. Then we realized homeroom teachers weren't the right group. But going by the recommendations of what the school district wanted is how we proceeded. And ultimately, how it has ended up in two of our chapters now is that high school students or middle school students that see more than two teachers, every teacher that has access to that student or has any interactions with that student, their record is available for that student. What that means is this: the teacher does not get to see the individual growth plan. The teacher does not get to see any of the data on the student. What the teacher has access to is to log in with his or her user credential and see my survey and take the survey and answer the questions. Once they hit submit, that survey gets attached to my student record, and the algorithms update the individual growth plan. If the teacher does not have access per your task force to see an individual growth plan, once the survey is completed, that's the end of their ability to look at that student record. So a student record attached to the user for security purposes only means to take the survey. And your group, under Nancy's leadership, will be deciding what is the best way for that to happen here.
So we have a, I, I don't want to say the word "problem," but we have a challenge with a lot of kids coming into our high school in the ninth grade because they want a Heights experience, and they feel the Heights experience is maybe better than the experience they're coming from. Let's hypothetically say that's Cleveland. If Cleveland is deploying something like this, does that mean an incoming ninth grader who was in Cleveland will have access to all that information?
It's basically, the question is, is it tied into EMIS?
I mean, trick question.
Yeah.
But, I mean, and I know there's a lot of things that have to be worked, worked out. I'd be real curious to see how that fits in. I mean, we have a very, very high trans-.
Mobility.
Mobility.
Mobility is the, it's the word.
Beautiful word. Yeah, yeah, mobility percentage. I'd be real curious to see how this would fit in. I mean, I assume there's going to be a presentation down the line when a lot of these things get figured out.
Well, this is one of the things that Nadia and I have spoken about quite frequently, is, is our high mobility rate and what that means for the system. The fact that the, that the, I don't know the right phrase for it, but the student, the ID number, the student number stays with the student if you come and go from the district. So if a student left for three weeks or three months, which happens in this district, and comes back, it, it would stay. It would, it would go dormant while they're gone. You know, as, as Nadia said, when Infinite Campus loaded, that the student had withdrawn from the district, and then it would come back. Your question about whether we, could we have access to, for example, the surveys and other information that was developed at CMSD? I'm going to say it's certainly not a conversation that we've had, and I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I'm going to guess we couldn't, but I don't know the answer to that.
So I would say at this point.
It's a good question, but we haven't discussed it.
Yeah, we haven't discussed it. But there's a, a great opportunity for, as we're starting to roll this out here in a community that is very close to a Say Yes community, there is an opportunity for that to come up early on.
Dan, you mentioned EMIS.
Yes.
EMIS holds test results and grades and such for students. A lot of those things could, in fact, be indicators on your list of 30 or 40, so then, so this could roll that in.
Right.
From a student who wasn't in our district prior, but still has that data.
Absolutely.
It's, if, if it connects to EMIS.
It would be an opportunity for.
Rather than having to type it all in again.
And, and, well, and also just to have a consistent student record.
Yeah.
It would be an interesting opportunity for us to do some interorganizational collaboration with Cleveland and others. Maybe it'd be, it would give us both an opportunity to say yes.
He's been waiting to use that.
Has, has any thought gone into, I mean, the deployment of the system? I mean, are you thinking of just starting with kindergarten and then move up? Or do you think, I, I'm, I'm looking at who would be impacted the quickest with this? I mean, do we have the potential in the next two to three years of having our high schoolers benefit from this? Is, is that how you're thinking of rolling this out? Or is that still too soon?
That's too far. We're looking to roll this out district-wide in the next six to eight months. Kindergarten to 12th grade to have their information in the database, to have individual growth.
Have the information in the database.
Individual growth plans generated, and have your social workers start working with referring students based on their particular needs.
And this just is, I mean, when you say all students, you mean all students, just not a subclass of students?
Correct.
All 5,000.
Yep. Correct.
There are a, a number of, of large conversations, though, that would need to take place, you know? I mean, I, for instance, I would really want to have long conversations with our high school guidance, because I want to hear personally from them that this is a direction that, that they buy into. But then there's, there's a great deal, as I see Bob back here, you know, if, I, I think that these, also these numbered steps, there are 14 of them. Those are determined by the district, or those are determined by who?
Those, the 33 indicators and the 14 pathway milestones are determined by national research.
Okay. So for instance, if, if, you know, if, if we're buying into this and we're saying, okay, Algebra II by the end of grade 11, there's reverse engineering, that we have to make sure that our adopted course of study aligns with, which for the most part, hopefully it would, although I'm not saying that as of today it all does. I think it's, it's certainly conversations that the board is eager to have. So, so it's a large conversation. I think that six to eight months, while I'm all for a good aggressive goal, that's a busy summer.
So there's a lot of stakeholder involvement that goes into that six to eight months of task force and work group work. So as we look to build out what some of these components are, there are different individuals that Nancy's leadership team would decide to come to the table. Not just the technology people or the social worker people, but there's teachers' involvement, there's parent involvement, there's actual student involvement in some of the task force work that happens along the way. And to your point about reverse engineering, it goes to what I started off by saying, that the, the system will give us the data and will be able to provide you those aggregate reports, so that it gives you some information as you're looking to make your decisions. You can look at the data that the system is able to provide you to see if there truly is a need and a gap, and when you look to reverse engineer, are we able to meet that specific need, and we notice that the students don't? Well, what is it that the district can do to help in time to be able to get us to there?
It's also worth pointing out, the teacher in me speaking, that we, in sort of, as far as an industry, we can get to the point where we have too many programs, too many new initiatives. This industry, I think, more than any other. We jump on a lot of trains, and we don't tend to exit trains. So there is initiative fatigue that I think a lot of our teaching staff and, and building level administrative staff, I think, can attest to, too. So we just, we need to be cognitive of that as well, and we need to include those people in a meaningful way in the, in the conversations as well.
When did we roll out Naviance? It's relatively recent.
Mm-hmm.
Seventeen? Was it 17?
Twenty-two years.
Third year?
It'll be our third, fourth year.
Yeah.
Depending on the level.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is just another graphic representation of what the system looks like. So as you're looking at one individual student, you can see along their particular pathway milestones, if they are on track, off track, or on track to thrive. And it'll also gray out any of the areas that that student at grade level has not reached yet. Again, just showing what the system looks like as you're an end user. This here is an example of what one of the aggregate reports look like. This here is an attendance report that is viewed by gender, by race, ethnicity, also by if a student is at risk. The bottom chart shows of the absences, how many were excused absences versus unexcused absences. So we're able to look at the individual data and aggregate it and slice and dice it in any report aspect that the board or the superintendent needs. This here is another way that some of the reports can be generated, looking at specific students and their kindergarten readiness, either on track or off track, on track to thrive and different percentages based on school building, based on grade level, based on race, gender, ethnicity. Also looking at it on an aggregate in a map. So if we're looking to see kindergarten readiness and where students are off track, if you see that most of the off tracks fall in one part of your community, then we can start having the community discussions on how we can help build resource and capacity in those particular areas of a community to help get students up to being on, on track to thrive in that particular area.
So for example, that would be like the part of town where there is no library programming for little kids or something and then we discover that that's a need.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to see how one would use it in specific examples.
So we've also been able to look at this particular, this is the reason why the map view even came in. This is a, a new component to the system here, the map view. We were able to look at where we needed to have tutoring services for English as a second language in two particular languages that aren't, that are top ten languages in a community for the school district, but not for the community as a whole. And the map was able to show us the need for those in two specific location areas. So when we're looking to work with program providers and help build their capacity that we're already providing that service, we were able to change their locations to where the need really was versus the need that was, where the students were currently having that service provided to them.
That's very cool.
And again, the system is extremely customizable. The framework is there. Your local task force and your work groups would help us build it the way you all need it here, along with your IT folks who are very engaged in the conversation. And it's not a one saw, fix all. Once we get the system up and running as you need, Nancy and her team can always look to modify it and customize it as needed. It's, it's very fluid system to meet the needs of the district and, and the students and families.
That's it.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
It would be really cool if tying into what Jim was saying about our mobile students, the, the information like you just described about what areas of the community receive the most students who are, who are most mobile and how they arrive to us in terms of their readiness for different sorts of work.
Yep, duly noted. That's a new one and we'll, we will start that discussion immediately because I think that that could really be important.
This is super exciting. I mean, you know, we're, we're asking a lot of, a lot of questions. We don't make it, I don't think we make it, want to sound like the Inquisition or anything. There's, there's a lot of, I mean, I see a lot of potential for this. I mean, the fact that we can now give our students a personal growth plan and maybe see that, you know, point out and visually show them what could be at the end of this tunnel that, that they're walking through. And then if you, in the future, if we can really couple that with the Say Yes! program, that would be really, really amazing, so.
Well, to be able to identify resources near where they are or where they go. That's amazing. It's good stuff.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. So if we can, board members, if we can get, if we want to get a picture of you guys because we're going to do a press release on it, if you want it in front of there, if you guys can go in.
They're going to get your picture.
Yep, yep. All of you guys.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So this is another partnership that we've been working towards. Actually, the partnership with the conversation around what they're going to talk about started with another partner, but we ended with the best partner. So thank you to Katie Davis, who was working, she was a member of the task force for the communities and schools. And she stepped up and brought us a partner who we're just absolutely amazed that we're going to get an opportunity possibly to work with in our own backyard. So thank you and your team for this great opportunity and Nancy for your leadership too on this next step. And Karen, where's Karen? Karen Liddell, who was working on this too. So we're just excited about this announcement about a potential partnership, so.
Thank you. And I want to introduce Dr. Vanessa Meyer. And I, I don't know your title.
So I'm the medical director for the school health program at Metro.
Okay. And then Katie Davis, who is the director of the school health program for Metro Health. And Katie and I have been working very closely together with both Karen and Scott Wartman over the last few months on pulling this together. So they came tonight to present to you.
Thank you. Good evening. So first of all, it was a great experience being on the task force. It's really wonderful from a health perspective to see a district just so interested in the whole child and seeing that whole wraparound purpose to, so we know so many factors go into education and success. And so we're excited here to talk about a partnership with your high school students in your district. So just a little bit about our school health program. Our mission is to improve access to healthcare by partnering with the community to advocate for and support the health and well-being of our children. And Metro Health has been involved within school health for over five years now. So we've done a lot of different things. We really believe that when you have a healthy student and they can come in and be their best, you're going to have a healthy school environment. And that also, that's going to go out into the community as well, whether it's things that they learn, that they teach their siblings or their parents, or even their educators. So a little bit about our program goals. We really have four main ones. The one is really increase access to healthcare and support services. We know sometimes that getting to a healthcare provider can be a challenge, whether that's because of parents' work hours, that's because of hours of offices, location, transportation, a lot of different factors. And we've seen across the country, when you have actually healthcare in the schools, that children are more successful in a lot of ways. That actually decreases emergency department utilization. On the academic side, you can also see success and that increases grade promotion and high school graduation as well, and that you can see across the nation. We also have a really, being the county hospital, we're really focused on population health. So we have a population health-focused delivery of care. We really want to make sure that we are meeting kids where they're at and making sure to fill in any gaps, so they really have that prevention focus. They're not just utilizing services when it's an emergency. A big focus is mental health screening and education, both not only for students, but also for faculty and staff, making sure people are up to date on what's going on with different youth mental health needs. And that was obviously something that came up in the task force as well, as a need that was identified by your community members. And again, that end goal is that improving educational and health outcomes. It truly is a partnership. We're really not just looking at what is the health of the students, but what are the educational outcomes as well? And so in the past five years, we've seen success in a variety of areas, both in primary care, enrollment and visit volumes in our program and utilization, as we kind of learn every school's a little bit different. And how do you promote it? How do you get individuals to trust? Why is healthcare in the school? And how do you build those relationships? We've seen some impact on school attendance and preventative care. This is just a little bit of our growth to show things that we've learned along the way. So our primary relationship in the past has been with the Cleveland Metropolitan School District when we started in the fall of 2014. And we've really seen our enrollment. And when I say enrollment, that means someone that's participated and signed up for our program. Again, it's, a program is at your school, it's really though, is it a fit for your students? And so we've seen our improved enrollment go from seventeen to forty-seven percent. And our visit volumes, and when we switched to some population health focus, last year we had over twenty-four hundred visits in our academic year and we're on track to have more than that this academic year.
That's great.
If we look at health outcomes, that we, and we track and start to look at data, in 2015, in terms of primary care access, we've seen that individuals that use our program in about fifty percent had a primary care visit. So that means they actually had their annual well-child exam, which is recommended for youth. But that went up to seventy percent in 2017, so in two years. And a lot of that, it doesn't mean that you necessarily have your visit at a school health clinic. We do a lot of outreach and education and reminders. I mean, I'm a nurse, but sometimes you get busy and you forget to go to that appointment. So we do a lot of that outreach to remind individuals. So it doesn't mean that they have to do it at our clinic, we maybe just connect them back to their primary care provider. We've also, in terms of preventative care, specifically for adolescents, that twelve to twenty-one-year age group, our population with that outreach, we have about fifty percent of that age group is getting physicals compared to the Ohio Medicaid, which is around forty-three percent. So that population care and that outreach can definitely make a difference. And with that, again, that primary care being the switch in terms of utilizing emergency department, we've seen that decrease in this population from using that emergency department, from that sixty to a little under forty. Obviously, on the academic side though, it's not just that health comes that I talked about. So we've seen, we've had a great opportunity to look at data with our students within the district. And so at one of our Westside High Schools, we've seen that individuals that utilize school health, their average absences for the year were seven point eight compared to non-school health users were fifteen point nine. So it's almost saving eight days of school for individuals using our program. And some other data, for attendance on there is ninety-four point eight to eighty-six point nine six in terms of, and these are all statistically significant. We also are looking at some GPA data as well. So we're seeing some of that national outcomes as we're starting to figure out the data collection. But in terms of, we also know that every school is different, every community is different. And so really, in our conversations with Dr. Dixon and Nancy, we really want this to be an intentional partnership. We really want to make sure that we're really looking at the needs of your community and what that you need. And so really, our goal for this spring is to conduct a district needs assessment, really focusing on your high school students and their parents to start, to look at what services do they need? Where do they already get primary care? What do they need access to? Do they need more urgent care visits? Do they need sports, physicals? Are there behavioral health needs? And what do, where do they want those services? Do they want them in the school? Do they want to have access to a provider somewhere else? And really, making sure we understand what those needs are before we just put something in right away. We also want to look at are there education gaps that they might need? Are there topics they're interested in? First aid, having physical activity or nutrition topics, both from the parents and students, as well as doing some professional involvement for teachers and staff. We obviously have a variety of health professionals that can teach some other areas and have a different perspective. And we'll be doing this, our strategy department will be working with Nancy and her team to figure out ways to do focus groups and surveys with students, staff, and parents. In the second phase, this spring, we'll also work on getting our consent form and pack it out to your community members. But beginning in the fall, two days a month, we'll, during school hours, we will have primary care services actually at the high school. We will be offering mental health screenings, sports, physicals, well-child exams. We can do urgent care visits, immunizations, make sure that they're up to date on anything. If they have some follow-up that they needed, buy a primary care physician. Vision, hearing screening, we can also do basic lab testing. And then using that information from both the needs assessment and the utilization, we'll work really closely with your school nurse too on scheduling for this. We'll be able to figure out really what is needed, how, how much scope of services, how often the services are needed, and what are some of those care gaps? Is there any questions?
So two days per month and it's just at the high school to start out?
To start, correct.
Okay. So obviously, there'll have to be a lot of communication because people need to know what two days a month.
Correct.
Otherwise, they will miss one of the two days or both of the two days.
And with that, a lot of that will be working with your school nurse to figure out ways to do the referral process and figuring out, so students can either, typically, they can talk to the school nurse or their parent can, or they can call us. And obviously, if we're not available though, we can help to make them appointment at our Cleveland Heights facility. So if they need something in between that, there is that opportunity.
And then eventually, we want to expand this beyond the high school?
That's going to be definitely a relationship that we'll continue to talk based on how that looks and depending on other partners as you expand.
And I don't see, I thought I saw previous, but I don't see anything about reproductive health as being services provided.
Reproductive health is services that can be provided as well.
Okay, great.
It's in the MOU.
Yeah, I'd love so.
Yes, correct.
And that's very important.
If I could add.
And that's comprehensive.
When you, when you asked about the two days a month and potential expansion, it's really important and we're finding from our relationship with the Cleveland Clinic related to the mobile health units at the elementary level, that it has to be very, very intentional and very clear what the ultimate goals are. And then the, the plan fall, the, the plan develops from the usage and the interest of the community. And so it would be a mistake for us to start out with something huge and ask Metro Health to invest a huge amount of staff time and energy into a program of, of throughout the, all the buildings and five days a week if the, the need and the interest wasn't there.
And I think there's definitely figuring out that need and interest. It might be that you need a nurse practitioner, but maybe you need an extra day where you need an immunization day and that can be a nurse. So it's figuring out what those needs are from both the needs assessment and even working with the school nurse to look at what the true population health needs are to make sure you have the right staff there.
So, so starting off, you would use for those two days a month, there would be the mobile unit?
No, we will, no, we will be in the school.
Okay.
A random thought, have you considered discussing with the athletic department when they need those physicals and timing those days? Because there's always a, a last minute crisis around getting your athletic physicals.
We need to play at five o'clock today. Can you get that physical?
Yes. That's because nobody does it in advance.
Sure. We've certainly discussed that and we do have an existing agreement with university hospitals for some of the, uh, uh.
Sports medicine.
Sports medicine. But there, we have been discussing that.
So how does this get paid for? So is this something that we pay for? Do our students' insurance pay for it?
Insurance, insurance is built.
So a student.
And if individuals do not have insurance, they can work with our financial counselor to enroll them in insurance. Because all individuals under, that are minors, are eligible for insurance.
I think a lot of our kids are sort of off the radar. I'm a little concerned that they'll show up and there's going to be no family support system that's going to want to put them on insurance and they can be left out.
But yes, as, also just at the county hospital, we will see people regardless of their ability to pay, so we will work to make those connections.
Okay. So if the demand is higher than two days a month, does this agreement scale?
Yeah, so like our current agreement is to, and look at, evaluate based on this data to say, okay, what does this look like and what are your needs? And then can we scale that to meet that demand?
Does that include in the summer, when we're not in session?
At this point, we haven't, at this point, no, just because we haven't talked about that in the summer. But that's definitely something to put on the table. Or whether it's also, we've done opportunities in the past where if we know, it's like, for example, coming back to that sports, physicals, just as an example, can we come in for one day for something like that? It's more of it.
Or immunizations in the fall for kindergarten.
Yes, to do a targeted day. For us, it's really also making sure that we know that there's going to be enough demand for that day.
Absolutely.
But yes, there's opportunities to do those other opportunities.
And this, is this available for staff as well?
At this point, no, but I think that's definitely something that we can discuss and that we'd be open to discussing.
So no pre-employment's physicals or?
That wasn't in our initial conversations, but I know that we would definitely be open to having that conversation.
And flu shots.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
So what happens to, I think, vans that say Cleveland Clinic on it at our elementary schools? Do they still?
They're, yeah, they're still serving the elementary schools. We'll, we'll assess all of these partnerships as they expand. Right now, there, I, I will say that the enrollment has not been at the level that I think we or the Cleveland Clinic would like ultimately. And we've been meeting pretty regularly, I met with them last week, about how to expand enrollment at the mobile units, at the two, and they're starting at a third elementary school. They're actually expanding to Noble at the beginning of, of March. But at this point, we don't, we don't see that that they have to impact each other. Other than a family, the only downside would be a family, a family, a parent or guardian having to fill out enrollment forms in two systems if they choose to enroll their student in either the mobile unit or the high school. Because it's a, they have to, they have to take a step to fill out a form for enrollment.
And that, can that happen at start of school or can that happen at the time of service?
Both. So our goal is obviously to have the paperwork filled out at the start of the school year so that you have it. Because it can, you know, just because you enroll in the program, you don't need to necessarily use it. But at least if we have it, then if something comes up, you're already set up and registered in our system. But there are definitely times for an urgent care that we can enroll at time of service. But there are definitely times for an urgent care that we can enroll at time of service. And the one thing, though, for our consent, it is, it's one time, so it's not a form that goes home every year. People can, we remove that consent at any time. And the one also great thing is that Cleveland Clinic and Metro do both have Epic. So if someone were, say, an eighth grader was seen at, you know, one school by CCF, and then comes to Metro, we'd be able to see that because of how our electronic health records work.
So if I have three children at three different building levels, can I drag all of them to one site? Or do I need to do the elementary kid at the mobile unit and the high school kid at the high school?
At this point, we've talked about just doing the, at the high school, but I think that's definitely a conversation to have, and that we'd be open to figuring out, because we obviously also want to make it what's going to be the best for the parents. And so I think we're open to having that conversation of, but we're starting at least with the high school.
Okay.
Perhaps this should become part of our new student registration?
Let the paperwork be done way in advance, and that way you don't know if you're going to need it, but it's there to begin.
It's there.
Yeah, and that's what we would recommend as well, and it's beneficial. We can have a letter that explains all of that, too, that it's, you know, only if needed, or when you want it, or when you want to schedule.
The mobile units at Boulevard and, where's the second one currently?
Oxford.
Oxford, and then we're adding Noble.
Yes, it's one mobile unit.
And it, so it's the same truck that's at different places, different days?
It's in the district on Tuesdays.
Okay, so depending on which Tuesday it is, you go to one school or the other?
Right.
Now, can I bring my high schooler to the mobile CCF truck?
You can.
Okay. But I need to know where it is that Tuesday and go chase it around town.
Right. So there's a, there's a system for that, and we can, we can talk about that. There's a, there's a system for, that the clinic schedules directly with the family members when a need is identified, and they will, they will let you know where the unit is.
They'll say, come back Tuesday next week, I'll give you the follow-up, and I'll be here. Okay.
Is that schedule available somewhere for, so, so can I look at a calendar someplace and know that the mobile unit is going to be at Boulevard in two Tuesdays, or?
No.
That would be helpful, I think, to users.
I, I understand, and it's, that's, the clinic is attempting to, it gets back to what I said earlier, the clinic, Cleveland Clinic is attempting to balance the needs at the different buildings. And so when there's no need, they work with the nurses, there's no need at that building for that day, because generally, when you're only talking a couple of times a month, you're not doing sick child, you know, interventions. You're, there's a need, there's a specific need for a well-child visit, or for an immunization, or for some, or for a follow-up from a primary care physician. So they manage that calendar based on the needs of the students at the buildings.
Trade-off between being nimble and being predictable.
So our sports relationship is with university hospital? Is that what I'm hearing? So if you're a girls' basketball person, you hurt yourself on the court, do we have a medic there?
Well, we have a trainer there.
I believe that that's only for the, the training, and they do have an arrangement for the, to provide the physicals in, in advance, but it doesn't, it's not exclusive. You don't have to get the physical from the UH docs in advance of your, of your season. But our, our signed agreement with university hospitals for the docs that are required at, I think it's hockey and football, I think are the two sports, that's through 2021.
The girl sports?
For doctor on site.
It's not a state requirement through Ohio High School Athletic Association, is that those two sports, I believe.
But the trainer is present at every game.
Okay.
Yes, there's always a trainer.
We have another relationship with Metro Health regarding our career tech programs, and I think you folks met with Nancy, and that's great.
Thank you for that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we're really concerned, I mean, this is great, we're concerned about that program as well. Is there anything that you can do with this relationship? Or if we build upon this relationship, that can help us get through some of the challenges that we have with that program?
Yeah, no, we had, Nancy and I had a great meeting last, last week, yes. And I'm actually, we came up with some different great ideas and some brainstorming, and I'm actually meeting within, most likely next week, but I told them within two weeks with our leadership, to figure out what those ideas were, and what are we able to do, and what is going to really be able to strengthen that partnerships. And there was, I think, Nancy, like, a lot of great brainstorming that happened. And so being able to have that list and move forward, I think, and come back to say, these are definitely the opportunities that we have, and we had some ideas about some workforce pipelines and some different things as well.
Yeah, we've got a lot of great kids, and we had a phenomenal relationship, I think, with Kaiser before they moved out, and then there was some health span, and then there was some, there's a lot of transition, but you folks filled that need in Cleveland Heights, and really like to be able to see that relationship get to where it used to be. I mean, we have hundreds of kids over the years that go through that program.
Yeah, no, we're definitely excited to continue those conversations.
Katie, I appreciate you being a part of the task force, and I'm very excited about the partnership.
So are we. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. [laughter] At the Cleveland Heights Community Center at 9:00 AM, correct?
9:00 AM.
Okay, so hopefully, people will be there. Also, I would be remiss if I did not mention that the Reaching Musical Heights event is taking place March 5th. Very excited about that, at Severance Hall, and that, Krista, help me out. Does it start, the reception starts at 6:30, oh, 6 o'clock, and the event is at 7:00? 7:30, okay. And then Rocks Arts has their benefit event at Hart Court Manor that same week. That is on Saturday, I believe, at 6:30?
6:30.
6:30.
And it's Saturday in the daytime.
And I think the Rocks Arts.
Rocks Arts is the same.
Oh, yes, and the Heights Family Academy is this Saturday on February 23rd. So I totally did not do those in order, but a lot of great events.
And you guys are doing a...
Yes, Jim and I are doing a presentation on where your tax dollars go. So we definitely invite everyone in the community for that.
On the 23rd.
Saturday, 23rd.
Saturday, the 23rd of the Saturday.
23rd.
Thank you.
All right. So lots of great things coming up. I also need to mention that tonight is Dr. Dixon's last meeting with us before she moves on. And I know Beverly has some thoughts that she wants to say. I also just want to thank Dr. Dixon for everything that she's done for our school district, the five-year strategic plan, the equity work, completing the high school and now the middle school projects, putting such a strong team together that this district has, the terrific partnerships, and we had, you know, three in the last couple of weeks. We had the one with Tri-C for the Culinary Institute, and the two that we had tonight. And there's just, and strengthening our CTE program. And I know Katrina Myers was here earlier, she may have left by now, but you've done so much for us, I can't thank you enough, and we wish you the best. And Beverly, I know you have words you would like to say as well.
Yes, I'd just like to read this. Dear Dr. Dixon, as I rewind back to year 2014 when I met you, you had just arrived to the Cleveland Heights University Heights community. I knew this, I knew this would be an experience that I would treasure for the rest of my life. Your commitment to our district has been immeasurable. You came as a change agent and cultivated a climate of excellence. Your dedication to the students, staff, and stakeholders of the Cleveland Heights University Heights community has been something that I have admired tremendously throughout your tenure. I recall our conversation on equity, and you asked me if the school had an equity policy. I was not sure, and we began to search for the answer. As it turned out, we did not. It was my first board assignment to research what an equity policy entailed, and how we would, how we would develop, how we would develop it. As we began gathering information and researching, we found out that no district in Cohoga County had a policy. As it turned out, CHUH was the first to adopt the equity policy. The project has gone on to support administrative staff, students, and board members. You have made great strides, strides in improving the lives of students who call Cleveland Heights University Heights home. I'd like to share some of those accomplishments with you, improving building culture, strategic planning, completion of goals, increased graduation rates, Heights High School renovation project completed, strong engagement in students, strong engagements with students and families, increased partnership and collaboration with stakeholders, middle school renovation, family academy project. This is just to name a few of your accomplishments. I thank you for the time you served with us and how you gave of your very best to all the students, staff, and community. Your infectious smile and powerful presence will be missed here in the Cleveland Heights University Heights district. You have become a sister and a friend, and not only to me, but to countless Cleveland Heights employees and staff. We thank you for the tremendous impact you have left on us, on the district as a whole. Please know, as you go forward in your future endeavors, that you have the love and support of the Tiger Nation behind you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
So, any other discussion? Do I get a motion to adjourn from the public session, and then we are going to move into an executive session? So I guess I'm, we're due to move to the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh. What's the executive session about?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, the executive session is to discuss personnel. I could read the whole statement.